My name is Lynn Harris. I'm the president of MCCPTA this year. I'm so happy to see everyone here. Thank all of you for being here. And I'm just very proud that, once again, MCCPTA has partnered with our great collaborative community partners, the League of Women Voters, the American Association of University Women, IDENTITY, and the NAACP Parents Council. And I was hoping that I'd be able to introduce our two student candidates for student member of the Board whose election is Wednesday. They told me Sunday they would be here, but I don't see either of them, just looking around the room. Well, hopefully, maybe they'll come later and we can introduce them, two very powerful young women from RM. So anyway, without any further ado, I'm going to turn the mic over to Lina. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Lynn. It's so good to be here tonight. I'm Lina Barnes, and I'm the past president of the League of Women Voters of Montgomery County. I have two roles tonight. First, I'm going to explain to everyone, as to my, the best of my ability, how you vote in a Board of Election race, how you vote, what the candidates are. And secondly, I'll be introducing three, I think, three of the four candidates who will not be on the ballot, but I will explain that as I'm talking. So let me get started. First of all, I think you all probably know about district races, where someone, a candidate, lives in a district, and all the people that live in a district vote for that, can vote for that candidate. And then there are at-large candidates, where they can be from anywhere within a large area, and everyone in that large area votes. And there might be districts and at-large candidates. That's the way our county council is set up. The Board of Education is set up differently. There are seven members who are elected, and then there's a student member also, who's elected by the students, I believe the middle school and the high school students in Montgomery County. But the voters in Montgomery County get to vote for seven members of the school board. The way this works is, you have an at-large candidate that runs every two years. And that at-large candidate can be from anywhere in the county, and everyone in the county votes for him. You also have district candidates. Those candidates have to live in the specific district, but everyone in the county votes for those people because it's felt that the school system is so important, the interests of the entire county should be reflected, and so therefore, the entire county voting population should get to vote. So you don't vote for just the people that live in your district. You vote for every single candidate. This year, there are going to be four races. There's one at-large. These people are here, and they'll be introduced in a moment. And also, District Three is also going to be introduced in a moment. I'm going to talk about the two races that are uncontested, because only two people have filed in each of those races. Because two people always go forward in a Board of Education primary, you do not have to have an election in the primary when there are just two candidates who have filed. In this case, for at-large, eight candidates have filed. For District Three, three candidates have filed. But in District One and District Five, only two candidates have filed. So when you get your ballot, you will only be voting in two races, and those are the candidates that you see here. There's one other thing to explain to you about voting. One is that people are either, register either as a Democrat or a Republican, or unaffiliated. If you've registered as an unaffiliated candidate, the only race you vote in is the Board of Education. That is the only race which will be on your ballot. You will not be voting for any Democratic candidates or any Republican candidates. The Board of Education is on both the Democratic and the Republican primary ballot, even though they are nonpartisans. No one runs as a partisan in a Board of Education race. So I think that's all the important things I need to tell you. One is that you have until, what's the date? The date is Tuesday, June 5th, to change your registration if you are unaffiliated, and you want to vote for more than the Board of Education, or if you're a Democrat and you want to vote in the Republican, or you're a Republican and you want to vote in the Democrats. So that's June 5th. And as you all know, June 26th is the date of the election, and early voting starts on June 14th. So with that said, let me introduce the candidates that are here tonight. First of all, in District One, we have candidate Maria Blower and Judy Daka. So I will ask each of them just to come up and say their names, so you can recognize them, and what their race is, and just say that much. Maria, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. My name's Maria Blower. And like they said, I will not be on the ballot in June, but I will be there in November. So I ask that you check me out. You can look at the website. It's mariaforboard.com. And thank you again for being here. I really appreciate the fact that everyone came out for this important conversation tonight. And thank you again.
Now Judy Daka, do you want to just come up?
Hi, I'm Judy Daka, and this is a great turnout. I've been in education for 38 years, and I've been on the Board for 11. I started my teaching career in Montgomery County, in this building. Didn't look like this then, but it was really a wonderful experience. I've really enjoyed it. I have worked really hard for diversity in the school system, but it's not my only interest. I am concerned about our challenging programs, and that we're going to continue to have them, and that will increase the membership in those programs. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Judy. And as Maria said, they will not be on the ballot, but they will be on the general election ballot in November. And then in District Five, the candidates are Paul Pishkosh, Pishkosh, whom I don't believe is here, but Brenda Wolf is. So Brenda, come up and introduce yourself briefly.
Good evening, and thank you all for coming this evening. My name is Brenda Wolf, and I'm running for the Board of Education in School District Five. I'm greatly concerned about equity and access issues. My entire life and career has been devoted to that. I am a lawyer by training. Please look me up on brendawolf.com.
Thank you, Brenda. So I know that Lynn wants to come up, because we do have a student candidate here. So Brenda was going to come up. Oh, no, Brenda Lynn, I'm sorry. Brenda was just speaking. Thank you, Lynn. And then you can introduce Byron.
Oh, sure. So one of our student, two candidates for student member of the Board is now with us. Ananya Todekonda is here. She's from RMHS. And again, their election is on Wednesday.
Good evening, everyone. This is an amazing turnout, much better than a lot of our student forums. Thank you all for being so engaged in the process and caring so much about the future of your children's education. I think it's so important that we have these forums, because sometimes elections like the Board of Education are overlooked, because they're considered small or insignificant. But we're literally building the leaders and the people of tomorrow. So I really enjoyed being part of a forum with some of the at-large candidates last Wednesday, and it's really great to be back to just hear everyone's ideas and potential colleagues in the future. So thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you for also acknowledging the student voice. I really appreciate that, and I hope that I have the fortune of working with a couple of these people up here today. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Ananya. And I would just echo what she said. It's a little odd that in a county that spends approximately 43% to 45% of its county revenues on the public schools every year, people think of the Board of Education as a down-ballot race. It strikes me as a little short-sighted. It's now my pleasure to introduce Byron Johns from the NAACP Parents Council for the next step in our forum.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing our moderator. And our moderator is none other than Tracy Potts. Tracy is the face in the morning from NBC TV, I'm sure a lot of you see. She's on very early in the morning, so I'm going to be very short, because we're getting near bedtime. Tracy has been in, reported in cities, New York, LA, Chicago, Washington. She can now add to her credits Montgomery County, and she is part of this. We are pleased she is a Montgomery County Public Schools mom. So Tracy, with no further ado, welcome our moderator.
Thank you. On behalf of all of the organizations that have put this together, I think we are all thrilled at the turnout. It shows why I love Montgomery County. People here are very engaged, and this is one of the reasons that you've come out tonight. So we want to respect your time, but we also want to take this time to give you the information that you need to make those important choices when you head to the ballot box in June, and then again in November. So let me explain a little bit how this is going to work tonight, explain to the candidates as well. Timing, first of all. We have an official timer. She is in the front row, so the candidates, I think, all have a clear view of her. The timer will time, we have two timers, I'm sorry, they're working together. Fantastic. So the timers will time the answers. Each question, and I will announce this in advance, the questions have different lengths of answers. A diverse group of parents, students, organizations representing parents, students, staff, pretty much everybody in the community, has gotten together and tried to come up with some questions that represent the concerns of the people in this community. Those answers range from a hand raise, to 30 seconds, to two minutes. And we will announce that in advance, so you know how long each one is. There are warning cards that you will see. You might want to show them those. There's a warning card based on the time that you have left, and there are also stop cards. I will say the same thing they tell me when I testify at school board meetings and at county council. If you are in the middle of a thought, please wrap that thought, and not the next one. Thank you. Okay, so that's in terms of timing. Now, order. Keep in mind that this is a forum. It is not a debate. So we are not trying to get the candidates to interact. We're trying to get them to give you their thoughts and positions on issues of interest and importance to you. So just keep that in mind. The candidates will put forward their positions when they're asked a question. They are seated in random order. This is how we're going to have them answer the questions, because there are so many. The at-large candidates you see, the eight of them here, will be grouped four and four. So each question will be directed to four people. And then the next question will be directed to four people, not necessarily in the order that you see them seated. And then the District Three candidates will answer questions together. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. And, oh, they're very important. There is a wild card. Everyone has one, blue wild card. And when there is a question that is directed to a group that is not yours, for example, I give a question to the District Three candidates, but someone overhears like, "That's my issue. I really need to talk about that." They have one opportunity this entire night, one, to use that wild card, okay? And that is your opportunity to address a question of importance to you that was not directed specifically to your group. So let me introduce the candidates. First of all, our at-large candidates tonight, Brandon Ripien. Actually, there, I'm sorry. I will go from this, from my left, all the way down. So we have Brandon Ripien, Ryan Arbuckle, I can see him, Carla Silvestre, Steven Sugg, Timur Adib, Julie Riley, John Robertson, and Marwa Omar Ibrahim. I've been practicing. I didn't want to butcher any of their names. Hopefully, I did okay. And then our District Three candidates, we have Laura Simon, Lynn Amano, and Patricia O'Neil. Okay, and with that, the questions will begin. So question one is for a group of our at-large candidates. These four candidates will be asked to address this question. Brandon, Mr. Ripien, Ryan Arbuckle, John Robertson, and Marwa Omar Ibrahim. This is a 90-second response, minute and a half. Microphones all on? Okay. All right. This is a 90-second response, and the question is this. Many in various communities in MCPs feel disenfranchised and feel that they have little community input. What can be done to make sure the input of various communities is considered? We'll start with Mr. Ripien.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you to our host, the League of Women Voters. It's a fantastic organization, very well-respected, that does important work here in our county. So thank you for hosting this. And thank you to the many people who've come out tonight. As a candidate who ran in 2016, it is nice to see a room full of people, because in many of the events that we had in 2016, we didn't have this robust a turnout. So thank you, and I think it speaks a lot to the respect that many people have for the League of Women Voters. So thank you. To answer your question, I think outreach is very important, and making sure that everyone feels welcome, and making sure that everyone feels that their voices are heard. Part of this, I think, has to do with the way the Board of Education currently runs, with a bit of lack of transparency. I think there are issues with not having open meetings. Those are things that I think that are important, and if elected, I will ensure that we have transparency in everything we do. I think we also need to make sure that we continue to make the proper investments in our communities, and make sure that the programs are there that individuals need, especially with, excuse me, with the number of suicides that we've had here in MCPs and among our children recently. I think that is something we have to be very conscientious about, and that needs to be looked into with mental health programs and things of that nature, to ensure that our children feel that their voices are heard and that no one is neglected. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arbuckle?
Yeah. First off, a great turnout. It's nice to see like this many people engaging and coming to this type of meeting to meet the candidates, and kind of hear what their opinions are, and discuss the issues. I think the biggest thing for community outreach is to involve the community. Have forums like this, monthly or bimonthly, in which parents and teachers can come together with the students and communicate these issues that they may have with the education system, or with their specific school, or a specific subject that may be troubling their students, or, you know, get the community involved in, into the education, because it's not just the teacher's responsibility, it's a community, you know, responsibility to get in and educate and help shape and form the education of our students. So I would advocate for more community involvement through that, through these forums like this, in which parents and teachers can come together with the students to express their concerns and be heard.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
Good evening, everyone. How's everybody doing? I decided to run for the school board this year, primarily because I am a parent. I have a seventh grader at Mario Lordeman Middle School. Even though I live in Clarksville, we drive her 45 minutes a day. Carpool is a beautiful thing. Part of the reason why I wanted to run is because when she was in elementary school, she would come home with this math from Curriculum 2.0, and I had no idea how to do it. And I taught math at some point. At that point, I started to realize that as a county, we could do a better job of communicating with the system, and actually setting structures in which the parent's voice could be heard. And we have some very intelligent, well-educated people in Montgomery County, but at times we feel like we do not have an interest into the discussion that happens at the school board. As a member of the at-large, I represent everybody. I represent the whole voices of Montgomery County. And I would like to hear that voice, set up town hall meetings, set up meetings in which I can get out and actually communicate. And I'm going to represent that voice. I feel as if I have to know what that voice actually is. And then once I know what the voice is, I think it's time that we empower that voice. I've said on committee meetings in Montgomery County, where truthfully, I felt like it was just there for show. I was just symbolically there. I would like to be able to set up structures where that voice actually have power to make some decisions about the decisions we make on the school board during this upcoming school year and moving it to the fore.
Thank you. Ms. Ibrahim?
Hi, thank you all for being here. I chose to run for school board and how this affects the disenfranchised communities, because I was one of those disenfranchised communities. I am a child of immigrants. I was a low-income family. And I got into the honors program because I saw my friends going to a different class each day, and I said, "Mommy, I want to go with them." So I learned from a very young age, if I wanted anything to happen in the county, I was going to have to do it for myself. But that shouldn't still be the case. One in three citizens of Montgomery County now are born in another country, and those are, I'm sorry, members of our county now are born in another country. And those people have children in our public school system. They need to be educated on how our school system works. My parents went to college in Sudan. They didn't know how Montgomery County Public Schools went, and they didn't know essentially how college was going to go for me. So I had to find out that information on my own. If we can streamline information to the families, to the students, make it more easily accessible, give them a way to research and find out information on their own, but then also have a boots-on-the-ground approach. We need to be able, as a Board of Education, to be in the schools. The teachers need to know our faces, the students need to know our faces, the parents need to know our faces. And we need to have the same interpersonal relationship with them, that they went with us, and they expect of us with our students, because we are creating the rules, the policies, and the curriculum that's going to help their students grow and become responsible financial adults in the county.
Thank you. Would any candidates like to use their wild card on this question? One-time-use wild card. Okay, Ms. Silvestre.
I think that I have been doing community engagement work in Montgomery County for the last 10 years, and particularly with Latino community. So this issue is very near and dear to me. I think it's a major flaw of the current MCPs system, is that we don't communicate well with our parents, with our teachers, and we don't do effective community engagement. Too often, decisions are made in central office and brought down to the schools very late in the game, where parents have very little time to understand the issue, get organized, and do something about it. So definitely, the coming down, the top-down decision-making process, community engagement is all about parents being involved in the decisions that affect their children, and we need to do a better job with that. Finally, we have to go where people are gathered, in their own language, at the times when they're available, not at the times when it's convenient for MCPs staff.
Thank you. Now, before we go to the next question, two points of order. First of all, I failed to tell you that those cards that are in your seats are for your questions. We have reserved time to make sure that questions, perhaps we have put together all the questions that we thought would be useful, but certainly, there are things that you want to know. So the cards that are in your seats are for your questions. Send them over. I think there are people who are collecting those cards. Please raise your hands. One, two, three. Okay, there are lots of them. So please give those to the people who are collecting those, and they will be moved through here, to me, and to the candidates for the second half of our program. So keep that in mind as you're listening. Okay, question number two. This is directed at the other four of our at-large candidates. Carla Silvestre, Steven Sugg, Timur Adib, and Julie Riley. It is a 90-second response as well. And the question is, what decision made by the current Board of Education might you disagree with? Why, and what alternate decision or decisions would you pursue? We'll start with, actually, we'll go the opposite way, and we'll start with Ms. Riley.
I've been an advocate for a number of years in Montgomery County, advocating on behalf of our students with disabilities, and advocating for equity at its heart. If we want to reach our students, we need to make sure that we have differentiated instruction. We need to have differentiated programs, whether we're talking about programs for highly gifted students, whether we're talking about programs for magnet programs with themes, or for our special education students who need a variety of accommodations, delivery models, and settings. One action that the Board of Education took, which was to close the secondary learning centers for our special education students. When those centers were closed, and it was done, I think, with a noble intention, which was to mainstream more students. My student has been, my son has been mainstreamed his entire educational career. He goes to, he went to his homeschool for elementary school and middle school, and now he's in an Asperger's program. But mainstreaming isn't appropriate for all students. Some students needed these learning centers. They needed to be in smaller settings, where they could have more support, and then also have access to the general education curriculum. And what the Board did instead, in an attempt to mainstream, was we have students who are in generalized settings with insufficient support, and then we have students who are placed into two larger programs that were not appropriate for them. So what I would do differently is to look at bringing back some of these secondary learning centers, so that these students can have the education they're entitled to and need, and that is appropriate for them.
Thank you. Mr. Adib?
Good evening, everybody. Let's see if this works well. It's a loaded question, as usual, like last week. But for me, we started on the wrong track the day we agreed to No Child Left Behind. Both of my children have graduated from MCPs. My son, from class of 2010, and my daughter, 2016. My son was privileged to start before No Child Left Behind, and I loved what we had back then. So I think the entire paradigm is wrong. I have an issue with the entire issue of the Board of Education and MCEA, which is the teachers' union, and the PTA, all being the controllers of the system. One of my primary focuses, I really believe in that village concept, you know, of Hillary Clinton, and schools should be for the purpose of enriching the community, the village. When we're spending $2.5 billion, I want to return on investment at the community level. So I think the entire paradigm that we have in Montgomery County has issue. So what would I change? I want to engage our neighborhoods. I want to engage our businesses. I want to realize that if you look at, the number-one employer is us, 23,000 employees. After that is NIH. After that is FDA. After that is the Naval Hospital. When we rely on government for our income source, we need to be looking at our paradigm that we're working on. So I think everything that we're doing, or the Board is doing now, I have issue with.
Bottom line is, on February 8th, 2018, our Board of Education opposed House Bill 393 in Annapolis. This bill was supported by the American Heart Association, by Maryland's pediatricians, and several Montgomery County physical education teachers. It would have aligned Montgomery County's physical educations, or the state's physical education standards, with what the experts recommend. Right now, Montgomery County ranks dead last in the state for the amount of time devoted to physical education and recess. And my academic research goes deeply into this. But the bottom line is, if we are not serious about the achievement gap, we are not serious about raising test scores, and we are not serious about the childhood obesity crisis, and we are not serious about the social-emotional health of our low-income children, if we deprive them of play, and if we make play a four-letter word. My six-year-old went to school today on a beautiful day, and I knew that he would only have 30 minutes of recess, and that is pedagogically unwise, and it is ingrained in the Montgomery County schools' culture, and we can do much better. There are schools that I work with in my day job that have one-fifth the per capita income of Montgomery County, and they found a way to get the curriculum outside, to get the kids moving, and the benefits are immense, and we have nothing to blame but ourselves that we cannot do this here in Montgomery County. And my first order of business is to reduce, reverse the Board's opposition to House Bill 393. We can do much better.
Thank you, Ms. Silvestre.
The main issue that I see, and I have testified before the Board of Education, is the dismantling of the ESAL department. We have 22,000 active ESAL students in Montgomery County Public Schools, and we don't have an office to support them. First, the Office of ESAL went away. The supervisor was eliminated. Every year, there's been a restructuring and cuts to the system. What is happening with ESAL? I put that out there because it's really hard to tell what is going on, and this is a significant portion of our student population. We should all be very concerned. But the issue that I want to bring up here is more about process. There's a lot of controversial decisions, like the moving of Spanish immersion, the assessment process for magnet schools, the Richard Montgomery Middle School. It's all been controversial because of the lack It's all been controversial because of the lack of communication, which is the issue that I brought up earlier. If we are not communicating, if MCPS is not putting the message ahead of time forward, then it causes a lot of confusion, a lot of chaos for both the parents and the teachers. So, yes, there's the ESAL issue, but then there's a process issue about how decisions are being made and how those decisions are being communicated to our parent and student communities.
Thank you. Any wild card responses to that question? Nope? If not, we will move on to question number three. This is a 90-second response for the now very patient District III candidates on the end, Laura Simon, Lynn Amano, and Patricia O'Neill. Your question is this. With increasing incidence of bullying, racial epithets, and intolerance in schools, what would you, as a member of the Board of Education, do to address this concern? We'll start with Ms. Simon.
Hi, everyone. This is something that I think we have to have no tolerance for and I think that one thing I would do is see if we can bolster our services, make sure we have enough counselors in place, that we have enough mental health people to talk to kids, and we have programs set up where we're talking to kids and they understand what's going on. Another thing I would look at is maybe the smartphones in the classroom because I think a lot of the bullying, parents don't realize, a lot of the bullying that's taking place is actually taking place in the classroom because the kids are using their smartphones in the classrooms when they shouldn't be and the teachers are having a hard time policing that. So, kids shouldn't be using social media in the classroom. We should be, oh, I think my time might be up, sorry. We need to be talking more to the kids about this, to the parents. Everyone needs to be involved. There should be zero tolerance. Thank you.
Ms. Amano.
Yes, so, in particular with this, my perspective on it is that we should be increasing our social-emotional learning at a young age for the kids. I feel like if we reach out to them at an early age, we can incorporate teaching compassion for other kids and that's something that will help address the bullying issue. Also, the restorative justice practices, I'm very much in favor of, also along a similar line where you have an opportunity for kids to make recompense for actions and they learn that compassion and that interaction with other students. And in addition to that, I'm very much in favor, thank you, of hiring additional counselors in our schools. I feel like we need to have counselors that are there to build relationships with our students, not just be able to process what registration classes that they have available to them. And that will do a number of things. Kids need trusted adults and it also addresses issues that we have of concern around, you know, it can be anything. It's something that might be going on at home or some dynamic that they have in their family. There would be a place and an outlet and a trusted adult for them to reach out for those issues, which often get reflected in bullying issues as well. Thank you.
Ms. O'Neill.
Well, certainly, every student needs to have a trusted adult who they can talk to within the schools. One of the big problems in bullying right now is that it is under-reported to adults in the school system. I do believe that restorative justice, restorative circles, working not just with the bully but the observers of the bullying, cultural proficiency training, and certainly, mental health services, our study circles. We've had study circles done with student groups as well as adults. But, you know, what gets measured gets done. If it's not reported, if it's not observed, it's very difficult for the school system to tackle, but it takes all of us. It's adults, parents, working with the school system, students, working with each other, learning to respect.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neill. Would there, are there any candidates that would like to do a wild card response to that? Okay, we'll start with Ms. Riley. I saw her card first.
Thank you. I'm Mexican-American and I grew up in Los Angeles in the 70s and I wouldn't want any child to have to hear the kind of things that I heard said about me and my mom and it's simply unacceptable and it's something that I care very deeply about because even now, in 2017, my son has come home from school in tears because he's been teased and bullied for having special needs and it reached the point where, well, and we felt that it wasn't being addressed appropriately. I think there are a number of things that we can do. We can make the curriculum more proactive in addressing bullying and addressing issues of diversity and tolerance and racial tolerance. We need to look at ways to increase diversity in our magnet programs and our choice programs and in our schools overall because that is a big component of addressing bias. We need the restorative justice component because that requires students to take responsibility for their actions and the security report has a number of measures to look at bullying and monitoring bullying and social media use. And I'm out of time, I apologize.
Thank you. Mr. Adib.
Issues that brought me to run this time. As you know, last week was the 19th anniversary of Columbine and next year will be the 20th anniversary. Again, my son was a school patrol and a conflict manager, like, right after Columbine. We did really aggressive things in Montgomery County to stop the bullying. My daughter, six years later, didn't have those kind of things. And then last year, my nephew, I think I told the panel last week, was a participant in the Trump wall, which is five kids lock arms and walk down the hallway and block a minority child and harass them as Trump would and say, "Go home to your country," which didn't excite me very much. So, I'm deeply concerned that we're going the wrong way. After Columbine, we did really aggressive things to stop bullying. And the fact that one of these questionnaires we got was saying, "Should parents be notified of bullying?" That was such an absurd question to me. How can you know there's bullying and have, I mean, there shouldn't be bullying in the first place if you know about it. I mean, how can you have that kind of question? So, I have issues with the policies we have. Thank you.
Question number four. This is a hand-raised question only. So, I will give you an option A and an option B. Okay? And the question is, and you can certainly use your wild card afterwards to elaborate on that. Here's the question. In an effort to expand access, given the limitations of the budget and instructional resources, are you in favor of making programs such as dual-language, CTE, Career Technology Education, and other programs, A, available in home schools, or B, in Centers of Excellence around the county? Let me repeat that. Given the limitations of the budget and instructional resources, are you in favor of making programs like dual-language programs, CTE programs, available, A, in home schools, or B, in Centers of Excellence at limited sites around the county? Raise your hand if you are in favor of, A, expanding, making these more available in home schools. Okay? That would be, for those of you who can't, keep your hands up. Mr. Ripien, Mr. Arbuckle, Ms. Silvestre, Mr. Adib, Ms. Riley, is that a yes or no? Yes, okay. Mr. Robertson and Ms. Simon. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. O'Neill. My apologies. Or at limited sites around the county. Ms. Amano and Ms. Ibrahim. And I think there was at least one abstention. Mr. Sugg. Fair enough. Okay. Is there anyone who would like to address that with their wild card? Then we are moving on. Okay. Question number five. This question is addressed to four of our at-large candidates. Ms. Ibrahim, Ms. Riley, Mr. Sugg, and Mr. Arbuckle. It is a 60-second, one minute, 60-second answer. MCPS Superintendent Jack Smith is pursuing a shift of resources for specialized services directly to schools as reflected in the county executive's FY 2019 operating budget proposal. This means directing funding away from the MCPS Central Office and eliminating key coordinating positions in Rockville. Please provide your views on this approach as it pertains to accelerated and enriched instruction, AEI. We will begin with Mr. Arbuckle.
So, I've followed a little bit of what the superintendent has started to do over the last year or so since I started getting interested in running for the Board of Education. And I believe that he's identifying an area that's a problem that needs to be given more resources to help make a better solution. And I think that his, you know, we're dealing with very limited resources as far as money, as far as, you know, teachers, as far as facilities, and he's kind of shifting them the resources that we have as best as he sees fit. And I think that I kind of agree with that, that kind of approach is, as you see areas where more improvement is needed, that you shift resources as well, as best you can to fix the issues.
Mr. Sugg.
Great schools that I've seen, whether it's a small-town, suburban, or urban across the country in the last few years, they rise from the ground up, not from central office down. And that means they start with a broad curriculum, they start with empowered educators, that means teachers, that means paraprofessionals, that means community members, and that also means a principal who is allowed to be creative. I just read a book by Sir Ken Robinson. It came in the mail yesterday. I read it today, a lot of it today. I don't tell my employer that, but anyway, I read a lot of it today and he talks about that a lot. And great schools have a broad curriculum. Great schools empower people from the bottom up and they allow for experimentation. I did my academic research at a great school in Western Maryland and they, the teachers there, they have a failure time. They're allowed to innovate and fail and we need that kind of culture here to where we can innovate from the ground up. And this would apply to gifted and accelerated instruction and it could apply across the board. We need to change our way of thinking and empower our schools and our teachers and great things can happen.
That was Stephen Sugg. Thank you. And the next speaker will be Julie Riley.
Thank you. It's a mistake. I recently led, he did a similar action with regard to the special education cluster supervisors, wanted to eliminate all six. They were a vital resource for parents when they're having trouble with the school system or the resource teachers when they have complex cases. They needed, they needed the highly specialized support from special office and we were able to restore through our parent advocacy. We got three of those positions restored. I believe it's the same thing for our enriched programming. They still need somebody in central office, an office that can supervise and oversee the programming. Those people have the greater expertise and they're an invaluable resource. So, I do think it's a mistake. It's important to have resources at the school, but at the same time, you need to have people with the greater expertise that can help manage, that can be a resource for parents and for teachers. I felt it was a mistake for the special education change and I felt it was a big mistake for the, sorry, my time is up, for the enriched programming office.
Julie Riley, thank you. The next response will come from Marwa Omar Ibrahim.
Hello. I do not agree with this at all. Coming from a, when I first started out teaching in this county, I didn't teach in the county system. I taught for a preschool program that had 11 preschools within the county. And at one point, they got rid of our teacher training program. This was a part of our central office that is how I got my 90-hour certificate. And when they did that, a lot of our resources, a lot of the support that we had, the education that we received as teachers, left. We had to do, we were already, as a teacher, your resources are already strained. Montgomery County teachers have already lost a professional day. They're already stretched to their limits. You take away the one specialist that's there to support them and to give them more, you're just putting more restraint on them, which then affects our students. I just, I've been through this in my own personal experience and I don't agree with it.
Thank you. That was Marwa Omar Ibrahim. And any wild card responses to that? Ms. O'Neill?
In the Board's budget action, we put the central office on a diet and the director of AEI was eliminated, but the coordinator position, there's still the unit office with instructional specialists and a data analyst. The other instructional specialists have been moved to one of three teams to get the services more closely to the schools. But the entire theme of the budget this year was to put, reduce the central office and put it on a diet to get some of the instructional specialists back into teaching positions because we've got to reduce class sizes.
Thank you. That was Patricia O'Neill. And the next question, let me remind you again, the cards on your seats, or hopefully now in your hands, are for your own questions and we have people around the room who are collecting those for the second half of our program. The next question will be directed to John Robertson, Brandon Ripien, Timur Adib, and Carla Silvestre. It is a 60-second response and this is the question. Given the same shift of resources, what do you see as the advantages or disadvantages of putting special education resources into schools versus at the central office? And we will start with John Robertson.
I'm in favor of moving the resources to the schools. As most of you probably know, I've spent the last 26 years in schools. Started off as a math teacher, became a social studies teacher, moved into administration at a high school, and now I'm an administrator at a middle school, Roberto Clemente Middle School. And one thing I can tell you is that we definitely need more resources within the school. That's the basic truth. We have an extremely well-educated teaching staff throughout Montgomery County. We have an extremely hard-working teaching staff throughout Montgomery County. I'll propose, and I do support, having those teachers take more of a leadership role in terms of setting the direction for the schools. A lot of people will tell you that what a school needs are great principals. That is true. But the true leadership happens from the teachers, on the leadership councils, and if you can empower those leaderships and allow them to be the resources within the school, then we continue to, as Ms. O'Neill said, deliver those resources, hire more teachers, make the classes smaller. The only way we could do that is we eliminate some of the weight from the top.
Thank you. Brandon Ripien?
Thank you. Every five years, the state conducts an education audit, the last one being done in 2016, and I believe there are 15 or 16 findings that were assessed by the state, many of them having to do with accountability of spending dollars, receding money, no-bid contracts, things that affect the money that we have on our, to spend on our programs. So, I'd first like to say that with better budgetary transparency and doing better things with the budget, being more fiduciary responsible, I don't think we have to cut any of these programs. I think there is plenty of money in the system to fund all of these programs and by doing a better job of overseeing how we spend the money and report it, I don't think we have to cut. I do think that shifting some of the resources to the schools is a wise investment. Children go to school in the schools, they don't go to school at the headquarters. So, focusing on the schools, I think, will improve the lives of everyone.
Timur Adib.
I had five years' experience working at Pennsylvania State Assembly overseeing 67 school districts. You know, I was in charge of the Board of Ed, just like you said, there was review done. That was me in Pennsylvania. I think I've seen every variation, every combination of how to teach. Our final analysis is, the principal matters, the school matters. One of my intents here is that every child should say, "I love my school." I mean, that's one of my goals. I, you know, we're talking about this equity stuff. We should provide the resources where every child says, "I love my school." Every resource should be given to the principal at the school level because that's where it matters. And I, we have not seen, or I have not seen where centralized administration, even us as the state, when we give money to the school districts, it wasn't effective. I guess my time is done because my mic is gone? No? It's the principal that matters and the school that matters, so what funding you can give to the school matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adib. And our final response on this question comes from Carla Silvestre.
Thank you. So, I think, so the question is, what's the advantage of shifting central office staff to the schools? And of course, we want the best for our students in the classroom. It kills me that we promote the best principals away from our students into central office, the best teachers as well. So, in theory, it is a good idea to return them to the classroom. However, we're talking about specialized populations that oftentimes by law need special interventions. We're talking about special education, English as a second language, and enriched instruction. So, I am in favor of this, but where is the plan? How are our students, how are we going to be sure that the students that need these special supports are going to get them when there isn't a central office person to direct staff on the ground on how to do this? In the case of, our central office staff often helps teachers that are not experts in these fields to help our students in these three areas.
Thank you, Ms. Silvestre. Any wild card responses on that question? No? Okay. We will move on to the question directed to the District III candidates in this order, Lynn Amano, Patricia O'Neill, and Laura Simon. Lynn Amano, Patricia O'Neal, and Laura Simon. This is a 60-second response. And the question is, "How can MCPS better prepare teachers for the challenges of today's classrooms?" That one is wide open. We'll start with Lynn Amano.
Okay, wow. So I, as I mentioned before, am in support of providing additional support for classrooms for the teachers. I think that a lot of our teachers are, as mentioned before, very highly trained and very committed to their students. I think there are a number of challenges facing the teachers that we need to address, including language issues, cultural sensitivity issues, trauma-informed training. Some of those programs have been started to be put into place and play out, which I think is a big boon to our system. The other thing I would like to say is that I think that we really need to work on recruiting teachers to diversify our staff that have that built-in both cultural sensitivity training and dual-language access to be able to provide the kind of services that we want to for our vastly diversified population. Thank you.
Lynn Amano, thank you. The next response from Patricia O'Neal?
One of the problems is that there is a looming teacher shortage coming. The higher learning institutions are not generating as many graduates to replace the baby boomers who are retiring from us. But the course of study at the universities, an elementary teacher comes out with maybe two semesters of college math, not really being qualified to teach math. Every newly hired teacher in MCPS undergoes extensive training. Our budget for teacher training, though, is minuscule. When I joined the Board, we were spending one cent of every dollar on teacher training. We're now up to about three cents because we lived through the recession. But we need to support our teachers, and they need professional development all throughout their career with us as curriculum change, as accountability standards change, as technology changes. But first and foremost, we also have to work with the higher learning institutions.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neal. We'll wrap this one up with Laura Simon.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is a great question. I think, I'd really like to see a change in the MCPS culture where the teachers feel like they can freely talk and express their opinion, because they are really, they're with our kids all day long, so they really know what's going on in the classroom. And I think, for instance, we see that there's a lot of talk of changing Curriculum 2.0. I think teachers knew immediately when this curriculum came out that it might not be so successful with the kids. I remember math problems coming home where the teachers would say, "Sorry, can't help you, I don't understand it either." So I'd like to see a lot more respect to the teachers so that we can listen to them more, hear what they have to say, have them freely express their opinion on what's going on in the classroom. And, and basically, that's it. I'd like to see the teachers feeling much more comfortable, because I think there's so much to glean from them, and that's the best way to, to just wrap up. It would be the best way maybe to start closing the achievement gap and starting doing the right thing in the classroom. Thank you.
Laura Simon, thank you. Any wild card responses to this question about better preparing teachers for the challenges of today's classrooms? Okay, great. A note to the candidates, take a breath, you're two-thirds done. At least with the prepared questions, we have lots of, I believe, because I've been seeing people moving around behind me, I think we have lots of audience questions for you to address in the second half. The next question is a hand-raised question to all of the candidates. Here's the question, would you, I'll give you the option. Would you agree that the Board of Education should have as one of its goals that every student will read at grade level by third grade and to support and hold MCPS accountable for that? Raise your hand if you agree. Absolutely. Would you agree that the Board of Education should have as one of its goals that every student will read at grade level by third grade and support and hold MCPS accountable for that? If you agree that every student should read by grade level at third grade and MCPS should be held accountable for that, raise your hand. That's Mr., I'll give them a second. Okay, I'll start from that side. So yes, agreeing with that, if you can't see in the back, are Ms. O'Neal, Ms. Amano, Ms. Simon, Ms. Ibrahim, Mr. Robertson, Ms. Silvestre, and Mr. Ripian. If you do not agree with that, you don't think that they should all read by, on grade level by third grade, and that MCPS should be held accountable for all students reading at that level, by that grade, raise your hand.
I think literally every single student, every single student.
That is the question. Every student. So disagreeing with that is Ms. Riley, Mr. Adib, Mr. Sugg, and Mr. Arbuckle. Would anyone like to use a wild card to address that more directly? The audience may have more specific questions about that, absolutely. The next question is addressed to a group of our district, again, a random selection of our at-large candidates, Mr. Adib, Mr. Ripian, Ms. Ibrahim, and Mr. Sugg. And this is your question. It is a two-minute response. Yeah, so take a breather. Here we go. "Do you believe there is an East-West County achievement gap, and how should this be addressed? As a Board member, what solutions would you support to have an impact on that achievement gap within one year?" And, let me reread the question, just to give you a minute to think about that. "Do you believe there is an East-West County achievement gap, and how should this be addressed? As a Board member, what solutions would you support to have an impact within one year?" And we will start with Stephen Sugg.
Long question, but I'm ready to go. Yes, there's obviously an achievement gap, and when you look at the statistics, it's very sobering, it's a nationwide trend, but we should look at the schools that have found ways to address the achievement gap. And I've spent much of the last five years of my professional and academic life looking at the folks who get it right. And first of all, we need to look beyond our boundaries in the United States. You go to Canada, within three years in Canada, they can, even adjusting for all other social and economic factors, they take non-English-speaking kids who immigrated to Canada, and within three years, they get them at grade level. They do it by a holistic, well-rounded education that truly emphasizes social-emotional. They go outside when it's below 30 degrees, for a hint, but that's just one example. So there are ways to do it, we need to look beyond our borders to see how it's done. Secondly, we need a well-rounded curriculum. We have gotten sucked in in Montgomery County to these false choices between seat time and math time and instructional time and reading time, and we have absolutely neglected the arts. We've neglected civics and civic education. We've neglected the humanities, and if you don't believe me, I can show you my son's kindergarten schedule. And we've neglected physical education. And these things are probably more important to our kids who are victims of the achievement gap because they don't get this enrichment at home so often, unfortunately. So we should stop doing harm. There are many things we can do overnight to improve the achievement gap, and they wouldn't cost us a dime. All it takes is political will and bucking some terrible trends, including curriculum narrowing, that have happened in American education and in Montgomery County education over the past few years. We can do this.
Stephen Sugg, thank you. Marwa Omar Ibrahim?
Within one year is quite the goal. In order to have something move so quickly and be in such a well-rounded manner, and to be able to affect so many different students, we need to be able to discuss this with the communities itself, the teachers, the parents, the clergymen, whoever, whoever is part of that child's life. We need to have a well-rounded community that is able to all participate. But that does not just stop at who's directly preaching to them or they're coming home to at night. We need to have a good, strong relationship with their after-school programs. We need to have a good, strong relationship. We have to partner with the libraries and the Department of Rec and see what we can do together as a community, as a family, to, how can I put this? To put, to encourage and empower that child to be what they are with who they are, and not try to make them fit into some standardized testing form, mold. Each child learns differently, and nobody knows that best than the community that supports them.
Thank you. Mr. Ripian?
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, the achievement gap does exist, and every election cycle, we talk about it, and it's as if nothing ever improves. And I think we have to have a real and honest discussion about this. The achievement gap is, does not reflect a failure of the classroom teachers, it reflects a failure of the parents. Parents are not doing the things necessary for their children to be successful at school. The learning that goes on at school should supplement the learning that goes on at home. It should not be a substitute for it. So by focusing on our curriculum, by empowering, to fix this achievement gap, we also have to engage the other half of the county government, that being Health and Human Services or the Family Justice Center. It's going to take a collective force to close this achievement gap because many of these issues occur outside of the public schools. And so we do need to engage the other half of the, of the government. Like I said, stronger curriculum, a focus on STEM. We have to be, the instruction has to be teaching our students for the careers that are not happening today, but the careers of the future, the jobs that are going to be coming. And while it may not take one year, it may take a little bit longer, but I think by engaging everybody and getting all the actors to participate, especially the parents, again, I do focus on this, and it upsets me when I hear the talk of the achievement gap, the achievement gap, and that we blame the teachers. I don't, I don't blame the teachers. I think that the parents need to do a better job of helping their children learn and be prepared so that they can achieve in school.
Brandon Ripian, thank you. And the final response to that question from Timor Adib.
It was a great question to that last part, to do it in one year. I mean, so the one-year part, if I had to do it in one year...
Can I just interrupt you? I'm sorry. Can you reset the, I just wanted to clarify because I heard this several times. The question says, "What solutions would you support to have an impact in one year, not to solve it in one year?"
To impact. Again, there was three reasons I'm running. One of them is I strongly believe that vocational education should be a primary focus. As I mentioned, when you look at the major employers, MCPS is the biggest employer, followed by NIH, followed by FDA, it's all government employers. We have no focus on growing for business. If we focus on vocational education, my son is finishing his master's degree, and he's looking for jobs, and the one question they said is, "Can you write code in three languages?" You don't need a master's degree to write code in three languages. You got that skill out Walter Johnson, you know? So there are a lot of jobs in today's world that doesn't require a four-year degree. I think we should focus on vocational education. I believe in that village concept, I believe that the schools should be the empowerment, I believe the schools should love their school, I mean, the students should love their school. When we were growing up, I mean, education is the great equalizer, and with all due respect to Barbara Bush, I mean, that's when I got involved in student education. Literacy is the key. So yes, there is a big disparity between the West and the East. I bought my house in the West, that's why we moved here. I didn't know about the East issues until last week. I mean, I kind of knew, but I didn't know how bad it was. I'm really against this busing all over the place. The question we had before, I believe, in keeping it local, and I would focus on the local school. So how would I do it in a year? Again, I think we need to focus on getting our kids ready for the job market. I think our job as the Board of Education is creating an enlightened citizenry where they know what's going on. I think we have to create more technicians and more people that have vocational skills. I think that is our solution. I don't believe every kid has to go to an Ivy League, and that seems to be the energy I hear since I moved to MCPS. So that is, how to do it in a year? I mean, if I had to do a change in a year, I would cut the boundaries out, but that's really going too far to the left. I think investing in our schools is the solution.
Mr. Adib, thank you. And any wild card responses to that? Okay, I saw Mr. Robertson and Ms. Amano. Mr. Robertson?
I'm so tired of hearing about the achievement gap, let me tell you. Ever since I got into education, we've been talking about the achievement gap, so I agree with that. What my 26 years of experience has taught me is that the achievement gap will always persist as long as we use the current educational paradigm. What I mean by that, we still using an 18th, 19th century educational paradigm model, so we're, our methods and our strategies are stuck in the 19th century in that darkness, and we're trying to move our students into the light of the 21st century. But that light and darkness can't occupy the same space at the same time, it's against the laws of physics. So what we do right now is that we sort kids based upon this notion of a fixed intelligence, where we know intelligence is far from being fixed. So we have kids who are tracked at probably second grade, third grade, and they carry that through with them throughout the rest of their educational career. However, that tracking marginalizes large groups of people who do not see themselves reflected in the curriculum, who do not see their culture validated by the curriculum, and that's what causes the achievement gap. We need a new paradigm.
Thank you. Ms. Amano?
Hello? Okay. Thank you. Not only can we see that change in one year, we have, there are known paradigms where that change has happened in one year. We are now just starting to institute this coming year, two schools, we're going to put in an extended-year program. And in DC, they showed that they had significant movement forward on the achievement gap in a year, and expanded from two schools to 13 schools as a result of that movement. In addition to that, I do agree that we have de facto segregation in our county, and that's one of the reasons, I was one of the few people who suggested, thank you, that we have concentrated centers of choice in our county. I do want there to be enough programs that everyone can access them, but I want to provide busing to support those programs. It's one of the few ways that we have in the county to combat our de facto segregation is the opportunity for parents to send their kids to schools and create a diversity that doesn't exist right now in our county. My daughter benefited from that at Lordhaman Middle School, and it's something that I think will encourage parents to help us meet that challenge as well. Thank you.
Ms. Amano, Lynn Amano, thank you. And I just want to do a quick check before we go to our last two questions. Who still has a blue card available? I have Mr. Ripian, Ms. Simon, Mr. Arbuckle, Mr. Sugg, Ms. Ibrahim, and Ms. O'Neal. Did I miss anyone? You used yours. That's right, you did. Thank you. And you used yours. You did not? Okay, great. Thank you. See, that's why you shouldn't keep track of things while you're asking questions. You want, you would like to use it now? For this ques, absolutely. Go right ahead.
Yeah, I think that there's a lot we can do to close the achievement gap, and I would like to see maybe providing more incentives for teachers so we get the best teachers where we need the most. I'd also like to see smaller class sizes, differentiated teaching. I'd like to see more role models. I'd like to see more teachers hired that look like the kids in the classroom. I think when, maybe one of the best things we can do is inspire and excite kids so that they're happy to go to school. I don't think we can rely on what's going to happen in the home environment. We have these kids for seven hours, and we also have after-school programs. We can beef them up, we can provide more excitement, more free time outside, but there's just, there's so much we can provide and offer, we just have to put our heads together and do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other blue cards for this question? Wildcards? Okay. We'll move on to question number 10. We have two questions left, and then we will be eagerly awaiting the audience questions, which I think are being processed. Great. This question is a two-minute response. It will be directed to a random selection of our at-large candidates, Julie Riley, John Robertson, Ryan Arbuckle, and Carla Silvestre. The question is, "For at least the past eight years, 2010 through 2017, the four-year adjusted graduation rate for Hispanic students in MCPS has never reached 81%. For African-Americans, 84% versus 95% for Caucasian and Asian students. What can you do as a member of the Board of Education that differs from what's been done by Board members during the past two decades to hold MCPS accountable for closing the achievement and opportunity gaps and addressing this inequity?" And we will begin with Ms. Riley.
Thank you. Julie Riley. Yeah, this gives us, this brings us back to the achievement gap, which is a moral, it's a moral imperative, and we should not be having these differences in graduation rates. It's not acceptable. And while I, as I've answered before, for every single student being learning, being on grade level to read in third grade, I'm not sure that that is feasible. There are many things that we can do to address the achievement gap and to have our students, regardless of color, regardless of their impacted, regardless of poverty... regardless of color, regardless of their impacted, regardless of poverty, regardless of ethnicity, to graduate together. I think it starts at the beginning. We need to expand early childhood education programs. We need to expand programs like ACEs and the Minority Scholars Programs, Linkages to Learning. Those are all programs that help students, that help students work toward graduation. Avid is a program at Paint Branch, which could be used as a model. That's a program that serves students that are somewhat in the middle and helps them make progress and helps them achieve their potential. We need restorative justice. We need to work on restorative justice so that students are not unfairly and disproportionately suspended out of school or expelled because of the color of their skin, and we need to dismantle, working along those lines, to dismantle the school-to-prison pipeline because these are all factors that affect the graduation rates. I really believe that we need fair and equitable access to magnet and specialized programs. Those, while I would like to see greater enriched programmings at our home schools, some of those programs are really unique, and they provide a good opportunity and do help with some of the segregation we see in our schools. We need funding to achieve equity. That means smaller classrooms where they are needed, and schools that are impacted by poverty. We need our Equity Initiatives Unit properly funded, and we need to work with the community.
Julie Riley, thank you. John Robertson?
I too am from, originally from Los Angeles, California, and I decided to go into education on December 20th, 1989. December 20th, 1989, I was a senior at Brown University, and I received word that one of my cousins with whom I grew up with in LA slept in the same bed together, took baths together, we were little. I received word that he had been shot nine times. While I was at Brown University, he had grown up to be the leader of the Denver Lane Blood Gang in Los Angeles. So of course, I reflected, you know, what was different about my life versus his, my path versus his, and the most salient factor I concluded was the fact that some kind of way, I had been sorted as a child into that upper grouping, and him and the rest of my family had been sorted into that lower group, and again, that factory-model paradigm of education. So what is the result of that? The result of that is many students, even students who are sorted at the top, go through their 12 years, 13 years of educational experience bored. They do not have a curriculum that sparks their interest. They do not have a curriculum that is attached to their hopes and to their dreams. Again, I spoke about my daughter who's in the seventh grade, straight A student, a great student, but she's only concerned about making straight As. If you ask her, okay, what did you learn today? She says, I don't know, but she can study and get ready for a test. That is what we happen. We are pushing our kids through like widgets through a factory machine. That has to stop. And then we're talking about African-American and Latino students. Last year, I took the year off because so many of my students were coming to me in distress, psychological stress. Families were coming to me in distress. So I took last year off to finish up a degree in social work, so I'm a licensed social worker. What we do not talk about is the fact that those students who are from low-income areas, predominantly people of color, they come to the schools with trauma, and we do not address trauma. We do not screen for trauma. We do not resource for trauma. So you have Maslow's Stages of Need and Bloom's Taxonomy. We have to address Maslow before Bloom, and we're not doing it.
John Robertson, thank you. Ryan Arbuckle?
So I think it's a couple different approaches that could be taken to kind of help this, the achievement gap in general, and explicitly for, you know, minority groups. Redefining the curriculum in which that the teachers don't feel they need to supplement with outside material in order to get the material to the students. Get the parents and the teachers involved in creating that curriculum so that they, because they know what the students' needs are. So at that level, we can use that resource that the teachers and the parents have to better create a curriculum that helps the students directly. Empowering the teachers and giving them more tools that they need to be able to then teach the students, be it more professional development, helping pay for their courses to further their degrees, more cultural training so that they understand the cultural needs of the students, community outreach. If you're not talking to the communities, you're not getting the information that you need to fix the problems. And a rounded education that includes the arts, that includes music, to get the kids involved and enjoying their education, and in doing so, hoping that they want to come to school, they want to learn, and they want to continue to further their education, and not just learning to pass a test, but learning for the sake of learning and getting knowledge for the sake of trying to better themselves further on down the road.
Ryan Arbuckle, thank you. Carla Silvestre?
So currently, the graduation rate for African-American students is about 88%, Latino students about 78%, and for English-language learners to start in the high school, it's 40%. So this is a really dire problem in our county school system that I'm glad the question is being asked because we must address. So the achievement gap, the graduation differences begin in kindergarten. So I am 100% in support of expanding our early care and education, pre-K, but also zero to five. Every parent knows that there's so much happening developmentally with our children from birth to when they enter the school system. So I would advocate for an education campaign so whoever's taking care of the child can have toolkit of things that they can be doing to enriching, to provide more enriching environment for the children at home. I'd also like to see us work with pediatricians. Everyone takes their kid in for a checkup. How can they walk home with, again, some toolkit, a toolkit so that they can be providing more enriching instruction? Yes, pre-K is important, but I also think we have to be more grassroots in a community education-type campaign to reach all parents. I think it's also important, I'm glad to see that we're doing dual-language programs because that is the nationally proven model for addressing achievement for our English-language learners. Well-implemented, well-supported dual-language models, otherwise it's not going to have the effect that we want. And the rest of the classroom gets to learn a language, another, a second language, at an age when they can actually acquire it. I want to see more rigor for all of our children. I think there's a bit of internal bias that we need to examine ourselves as community members, parents, and teachers, so that we're not keeping our Black and Brown children from taking the most rigorous classes. I work at Montgomery College, and a third of our students have to take remedial English. 63% have to take remedial math. That's a big red flag that we need to do more to make sure that all of our students are taking the most rigorous classes.
Ms. Silvestre, thank you. Any wild card responses to that question? I believe we have four candidates, if I'm not mistaken, who have wild cards left? No? If not, we will move on to our final question because I am really excited to see what questions you have. Lots of activity going on back here. Our final question is addressed to the District III candidates, Patricia O'Neal, Laura Simon, and Lynn Amano. It is a two-minute response, and this is the question. MCPS schools are increasingly racially and socio-economically separated. How should the district address this, and what policy changes, if any, do you want to see in effect? Ms. O'Neal?
So, two years ago, the Board received the results of the Metis Report, which was the study of choice, how children move about the district. And there were a number of recommendations. It was also reflective of the lack of diversity in our Centers for the Highly Gifted. There were, anyway, we've been working through the recommendations. We did have made some policy changes, one of which is that courses in the career and technology education arena are open to people being able to go there without having to get a COSA. This year, the McGruder Aviation Technology Program has been widely, wildly subscribed by students outside. But, you know, moving, one of the problems is that so many of our schools are so overcrowded, and communities are entrenched in their boundaries. Every single boundary decision is a difficult one. But we know that we need to give kids choice, that students do better when they have opportunities to choose. So we have to make the policy decisions that support the program. We supported a shift away from one-way immersion to the dual language. That was one of the recommendations from the report. Making changes in accessibility for career, making available more seats for center, for the highly gifted. This year, we're piloting for the middle schools. We need to make sure that we have opportunities all over this county. It's not so easy to travel across county because of transportation, and transportation costs also take money.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neal. Ms. Amano?
Yes, this is act, this is actually refers back to, is that my mic on? Okay. Yeah, this actually refers back to the issue that I discussed before. I am very much in support of the whole-school magnet that was referred to in the choice study as well. And I do think that we should be supporting them with busing so that parents will voluntarily integrate our schools. It is something that has been shown to be a model that works. I encourage whole-school magnet because that keeps the population from being a school within a school. That's why that model worked very well for us at Lordhaman. It wasn't a divided community, and it actually makes sure that children of color have access to those same enrichment-type programs as well. I think there's some places where we could improve on that. We have like a visual arts program at the Einstein High School, which I think should be a full-day program instead of a half-day program so that students commit to going that for the whole day, because where students are, that's where our parents put their resources and their energy and their advocacy, and I think that would be a big boon for us for that as well. In terms of the transportation costs, it is true that busing would cost more to be able to provide those kind of choice to all of our students, but we can also use that transportation to help fill seats at schools that we do have that have capacity, and we do have some of those in our county as well. Making smart decisions about where we put those programs to help do the kind of diversification that we want is something that is very important when we make that decision. And, you know, we're replacing a situation where we might be able to save money on expanding schools if we're able to draw students to schools that have less capacity as well. The other thing, let's see. Yeah, the other thing is, in terms of the demand for the programs, we have a big demand for programs like the CAP program, and so there is an opportunity to expand those programs in different areas around the county so that we are able to have kids be able to maximize those opportunities.
Thank you. And Ms. Simon?
Hi. I think the, I think the program works really well, and the concept is a very good one. I think there's, which is the concept of bringing magnet schools and center, gifted centers and enrichment schools in certain areas to help elevate the school. I think that works very well.
Maybe it needs a little bit of work, and I think we should work on that. One area is the transportation. It makes it hard for some kids, but I don't think the programs have been exactly doing exactly what we want, but I do think there's a lot of potential, and I do think we should continue to try and have those magnet schools, and even if they're schools within a schools, I think overall, it's doing more good than harm, and I think we should just work on making it better. Thank you.
Wild card responses to this question? Okay. Well, we have finished the first half of our program. How about we give all the candidates a hand for endurance? Okay. Now, you guys have been on the spot. I get my on-the-spot chance here. Issue we have not quite gotten to? Okay. Let's start with the short one. This, I'm going to, well, first of all, let me explain how this is going to work. I have your questions. We are going to, in the interest of time, again, because I really want to respect your time, but we want to make sure you're able to get all of the information you came here to get, let's keep these answers, I will do them between 30 minutes, 30 seconds, 30 minutes, 30 seconds and one minute, so that we can get to more of the issues that you wanted to address. And we are also going to use the same random order that we started with. Okay, back to the top. So the first question will be addressed to at-large candidates Brandon Ripian, Ryan Arbuckle, John Robertson, and Marwa Omar Ibrahim. And this is the question. Would you support implicit bias training for teachers and staff? Let's make this a 30-second response. Would you support implicit bias training for teachers and staff? And hopefully, within the 30 seconds, you can explain to us why. We will start with Brandon Ripian.
Yes. Thank you. Yes, I support expanded training programs for our teachers. I think that the diversity here in our county is one of our great strengths and that we need to rely on it more. I think that if we have classroom teachers that reflect the students that are there, I think some of these issues that we have will innately solve themselves. So I do support training for the teachers. And I also want to say, I do support higher pay for our classroom teachers in general. I think that in order to have the best teachers, we need to make sure that we are recruiting them from across all the sectors out there, and so in order to do that, we do need to offer higher pay for our teachers.
Mr. Arbuckle?
Yes, I would definitely support training that kind of helped teachers understand the diversity within Montgomery County, that allowed them to understand the culture that the student population makes up so that they can better address the issues that the students may individually have. But, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
The goal of implicit bias training, and it's currently happening throughout Montgomery County now, so I definitely support it. In fact, I helped to implement it. But the purpose of it, again, is to raise the level of awareness about ourselves as a cultural person, our cultural identities, and then by doing that, we can be empathetic to the culture of others. Teachers have embraced that training. I just don't think it goes far enough, because what happens is that we have teachers being trained in a bucket over here, and then we have a curriculum in a bucket over here, and there's no bridge to connect those two together. They can be trained as much as they want to, but if those values aren't reflected in the curriculum, it really doesn't make much of a difference.
Thank you. Ms. Ibrahim?
I do agree with implicit bias training, but not in that sense. Implicit bias training creates a negative context with our teachers and then gives them the, creates the notion that they are already biased towards our students. What we need is cultural competency training, which is something that actually one of our counselors here at Gaithersburg High School, Dr. Darkwin, currently does. It's something that we, as a county, as a school system, can encourage how we learn about our students, how they learn how they're being spoken to at home, how their culture affects their learning skills, and how we can then support them to bridge that gap.
Any wild card responses on implicit bias training? Okay, then we will go to our next response, which is going to be 30 seconds for our random group of at-large candidates, Carla Silvestre, Stephen Sugg, Timur Adib, and Julie Riley. Yes or no? But you got 30 seconds, so you can say yes or no plus, okay? Yes or no? Do you support students' rights to protest during school hours? We will start with Carla Silvestre.
Our students, yes, they do need to be supported. I do support them protesting during school hours. I think it's important that what we saw happen recently is that student leadership was asked to organize safe events in the school, so it's important that the school leaders have the support of the administration so that when they're being asked to do something, the administration's going to have their back. It's a great way for them to get engaged civically, and I think that we should support them.
Okay. Thank you. Stephen Sugg?
You're darn right, but the First Amendment goes both ways, so I would also support the students who might not have the popular opinions on whatever the issues of the day are, the day is, to go out and protest as well. I think it's important to protect the First Amendment when we do it at all sides. And finally, I am a huge advocate for them doing this, for protesting, they're going to learn more, but if they have consequences, they miss a test or whatever else, just like the rest of us, they've got to deal with it, and they'll learn from that as well. But the bottom line is, yes, and many of our great social movements were started by student protests. Keep it up, kids.
Thank you. Timur Adib?
Yes, not only that, I'm...
Not only that, I was a student radical and a student SGA member, but I would make it a field, a mandatory field day or a social studies learning if it was up to me. Just to be honest, I was suspended for 10 days when I was a junior for refusing to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance because my math teacher said I had to. Once the Board of Education says it was my right, yes or no, then I was fine with it. But the fact that somebody told me I had to stand really offended me. So I was willing to take the 10-day suspension for that. So I absolutely support student radicals. That's where we make a difference in the world.
Thank you. And Julie Riley?
Free speech does not stop at the schoolhouse gate. You know, where I would, I would differ, though, is I think that if, if a parent, I try to send my kid off with a note. I mean, he went down to protest in the recent protest for never again. I believe that if parents want to write a note excusing their student, that should be treated the same as a medical appointment or anything else. You can't teach civil rights unless you let them engage in civil rights. And I found it really sort of hypocritical that he is not excused from his AP government class when I'm willing to write a note and allow him to do it. Sorry.
Do we have any wild card response? Thank you, Julie Riley. Do we have any wild card responses to address student protest during school hours? If not, we will move on. District three candidates, Laura Simon, Lynn Imano, and Patricia O'Neal. What is your position on synthetic turf? Should we be concerned about, should we be concerned about safety issues and cost of maintenance? Ms. Simon?
Yeah, I, I think safety always comes first. I mean, there's no future if there's no, if we're not putting the health of the child first. So I, I think the turf needs to be safe. I don't know if, it's, I don't know all the details of this issue, but I would say costs are secondary, health is first. We're talking, I know that we're enough to know that we're talking about cancer and some other things, and health is first, cost second. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Imano?
No, I don't support synthetic turf. I think that it's been shown that there are ways that we can have natural grass fields that we can support doing that. And I would be more in favor of putting the efforts, perhaps letting parks manage our fields so that we were able to maintain them in a way that worked better for our schools.
Thank you. Patricia O'Neal?
Yes, I do support artificial turf. I certainly prefer grass. But I know from personal experience as a member of the, an all-sports booster club, grass in this community is almost impossible to maintain when our fields never have the opportunity to rest. If you notice, even the Washington Redskins have a terrible time maintaining their field. Their fields the last season, last part of this season were pure dirt unless they happened to spray it green. Safe fields, whether it's grass or artificial turf.
Thank you. Any wild card responses to that? Mr. Ripian?
Thank you. I do not support artificial fields. I think the verdict is still out on whether or not those are carcinogens. I think there are some studies showing that they are very harmful to students. And also with cellphone towers. I don't support having the cellphone towers on the schools. I think the verdict is out also on that as well, and that's something I'm concerned about. And speaking about health, I think we also need reform when it comes to the food that is served here at the public schools. I think we can do a better job with that. And the, the obesity problem that many children are struggling with, I think better food and a healthier environment in that aspect is something also we need to focus on.
Thank you. Okay. Next question. This has got to be a minute. If we had more time, I'd give it five per person, but it's going to take a minute. So a one-minute response. And this will be directed to... Sorry, I'm on the spot. Give me a sec. I want to make sure I'm not repeating myself here. Okay. The next group, Marwa Ibrahim, Julie Riley, Stephen Sugg, and Ryan Arbuckle. Your question is, and of course, anyone who has a wild card left. Your question is, please address your views on discipline bias in education in Montgomery County. How would you address that? Starting with Marwa Ibrahim.
I can't say specifically on the discipline bias as in I do not have enough information on it. But I can say, being a Montgomery County public, a former Montgomery County Public School student, I did not agree with how our administrations would hold accountable those who were doing wrongdoing within the school. As a student who got suspended for being bullied, I didn't appreciate that the administration did not take into account the repercussions of what that effect had on me, putting me into ISS, into a classroom full of the students who were doing the bullying. And then there was no, no reconstructive justice for those who were doing the bullying. I didn't hate them. I just knew that they were lost, and I needed them to understand that they were lost.
Thank you. Julie Riley?
How would I address? Oh, there is significant bias in discipline. I mean, the GAO just published a report that, that talks about how significantly overrepresented students of color are and students impacted by poverty, and actually, students with special needs. They are much more likely to be subject to out-of-school suspensions, to be expelled, and not because they've done anything more severe, but it's because of bias. And it's often for issues of what we call respect, these kind of squishy things, where a teacher, for whatever reason, and I think it's an unconscious implicit bias, just gets more upset and expels the student of color and, and, and not, not the white student. Or the same for a student with special needs. Restorative justice is connected to this, okay? Because restorative justice with appropriate bias training can help us provide fair discipline when it's appropriate, can allow people to make amends when it's appropriate. But then you have to combine that with the bias training. And I'm sorry, I'm out of time.
Thank you. Stephen Sugg?
It's unequivocally real. It's the first step in the school-to-prison pipeline. And is, as Ms. Riley said, the GAO report, if you read it, it's even worse than you might think. The GAO did a great job, and they chronicled it quite well. But it starts at early childhood. Nationally, 39% of African-American kids, at the last count, did not get recess, or that only applied to about 10% of white children. And the same goes for other minorities as well. And so if we stop taking childhood away from our most vulnerable children, that's the first step to addressing the core issue at the heart of this problem. So discipline, discipline bias is real. But to get to the root of the problem, we start having, we have to start treating our most vulnerable children as children. Let them outside, let them play.
Stephen Sugg, thank you. Ryan Arbuckle?
I don't have students or children in Montgomery County school systems, and I didn't go to Montgomery County school systems for my education. But I would say that if teachers are disciplining a student, it should be ground in, in evidence to, to support the, the discipline action. If they can't support the discipline action either through the regulations and rules that are put forth by the Board of Education or the school, then it, I would, I would say that the student should not be disciplined in such a way. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Arbuckle? Any wild card responses to that? No? Okay. Next question is addressed to... I think I'm going to apply to be a game show host after this. Between the questions, making sure everybody gets a fair chance. Here we go. This is for John Robertson, Timur Adib, Carla Silvestre, and Brandon Ripian. And your question is going to be... Let's do a minute on this. Are school boundaries equitably drawn? And I'm going to add to that. If not, what can we do to make sure that they are? Starting with John Robertson.
I think the intention is definitely for them to be equitably drawn. I don't think they are currently. I, I think pretty much everyone probably has read reports about how we moving back into a segregated school area. That happens within Montgomery County. But it also happens within programs. Again, I work at Roberto Clemente Middle School. We are a magnet school. We have two center programs. For the center students, that population is 92% white and Asian. And for the non-center students, it's 78% students of color, African-American and Latino. So, you know, we have to think about, again, what kind of community do we want to live in? And that's a two-way process. Schools are a microcosm of the larger environment. So, and it's a reciprocal process. When we graduate students, most of them come back and they live in Montgomery County. So what kind of county do we want to have? I think that's the job for the vision for the school system, to inform the parents and to get your participation in. How do we want to grow our students for the communities in which we live?
John Robertson, thank you. Timur Adib?
I think this is one of the base issues I have. Clearly, there's no equity what we have. We had, we discussed on west and east. When I was a commissioner in Phoenix, one of the things that we did was, I mean, I was also in law school in Baltimore. Empowering neighborhoods is a critical thing for me. If you look, the only difference that we have in this county, obviously, is the resources that the PTA have, and the PTA gets it because of where they are. I don't want to touch the PTA issue, but I, again, I go back to neighborhoods, empowering parents, and getting businesses involved. I mean, if we get the neighborhood engaged and the students loving their school, I think it's a great equalizer to this question. I don't want to go redistricting the things. I'm not a proponent of this mass busing. My, my child was offered that when, you know, the gifted thing for Silver Spring. Logistically, it was a nightmare for us. So my focus would be, again, engaging the neighborhoods, engaging the parents, and that's it. Got to stop.
Thank you. Carla Silvestre?
I think that the, the boundaries were an attempt to have more equitable distribution of resources and also more diversity, but that was years ago. People kind of saw where the, where things fell and then chose to buy their homes in different areas of the county. I think that it's also something that's very tied to zoning and land use. Where are we building our new developments? We can always redraw the line and shift it around, but it's also a collaboration with the county in terms of where new developments are going up, where is affordable housing going up in this county. We have opportunities to change things. We were just, all of us at the Hillendale Civic Association, and they want us to look at Northeast Consortium. Is it working? Can we do something differently? A new, a new high school is going up in West County. It will have to have new boundaries drawn. So there, there's opportunities for us to reset the current boundary structure for a more equitable and diverse system.
Thank you. And Brandon Ripian?
Thank you. I think we do have good intentions on this, but it doesn't always work out the best. It is a complex issue, especially when you're talking about individuals, home values and property taxes, and the home is, is the biggest investment that a, a family normally makes. So I, I think it is a, a complex issue. I do think we need, this is another issue where I think we have to do a better job, the board, engaging the other half of the government. We talked about the developments that are being built, and that is leading to the overcrowding of schools. And I don't think that the county council has done a, a good job in holding these developers accountable to make sure that the proper investment fees are being paid by them so that the new schools can be built and that we can have additional classrooms be built if that is what needs to happen also. So I think, again, that this is, it's a complex issue, and I do think we have to engage the other half of the government on this. And to make sure that the developers are paying the, the, the impact fees to make sure that we can make the investments in the public schools for the future.
Thank you. Okay. I'm getting a wrap except I have all of these great questions here. So, here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to very quickly do two more handraise-only questions. Can I do that? Thank you. And then you have a 30-second, we're going to have to cut it to 30 seconds, wrap for each of you, but I'm going to throw in something for you to think about in your wrap. You don't have to answer the question, but I'm going to throw it out there. So, here is the handraise question for everyone. What is your position on establishing dress codes for teachers and students? Should Montgomery County have a dress code for teacher? Well, that's two questions. Let's just go with students, because that's probably what they're most concerned about. Should Montgomery County have a dress code for students? It says dress codes. Uniforms, I think, may be what they were trying to get at. And I know that may be a question for students. So, enforce the dress code. Well, let, so executive decision. Here's the question. What is your position on uniforms for Montgomery County students? Yes or no? If you believe, eh, take five seconds. Okay. Uniforms for Montgomery County students. Yes, raise your hand. No, raise your hand. If students voted, you might all get elected. I don't know. Okay. And the next handraise question is, would you commit to installing solar panels on school structures at a rapid pace wherever, I'm going to throw this in, economically feasible? Would you commit to installing solar panels on school structures at a rapid pace wherever economically feasible? Yes, raise your hand? Okay? No, raise your hand? Okay. And maybe you want to address that in your closing. You guys have been very patient. We do like to give the candidates an opportunity, 30 seconds each, to give a closing statement. And I'm just going to throw this out there because it was a really good question and we didn't get a chance to address it. So if you can work it into your closing statement, fine. If not, we'd like to hear whatever you have to say. The question was, what policies do you support to boost recruiting and retaining good teachers? Because besides good students, the thing that we value in this county, of course, are good teachers, to make sure our good students get a good education. So, I'll throw that thought out there, and we will begin at the opposite end this time with Ms. O'Neal and your closing statement for 30 seconds.
Thank you for your attention. I know these seats are hard. It has been an honor for me to serve on the Board of Education since 1998. I've experienced it as a student, a graduate of Walter Johnson High School, as a parent, parent volunteer, and as a board member. I know that we have many students receiving free and reduced meals, special education, and limited English services that are continuing to struggle. We have new pending requirements from the federal government for accountability. Now more than ever, we need experienced leadership.
Thank you. Ms. Imano?
Yeah. I'm a 17-year veteran parent of MCPS schools, so I really understand what it's like to be in the school system and the policies from the inside. And I do think that we could make some better decisions and get better results, specifically with programming and relieving some overcrowding at our schools. In regards to teachers, I'll squeeze that in. I think that we can have a great quality of life here, and we can provide incentives to help get some good teachers to come to be with us as opposed to other places in the country. And I think every child deserves a pathway to success. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Simon?
Yeah. I think MCPS has changed a lot in the past, in the past years. And I think MCPS could use a fresh perspective. One of the reasons I'm running is, is, is health and safety. That's my top priority, focusing on mental health issues, counseling, screen use in the classroom, smartphones in the classroom. So health, safety, and wellness, so if that's important to you, that's my issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ibrahim?
Hi. I just want to say thank you guys all for being here again. It's a late night, especially if you guys, like me, just worked an eight-hour day. I want to say that this, this race has been close to home. This is a county I grew up in. I came from, I graduated from the Wheaton Cluster. My brother was a special needs student who also graduated. And then because of Montgomery County students got the education that got him through Montgomery College and University of Maryland. But as a minority student, a first generation, a child of immigrants, a low-income family, I was also on farms. I know what this county needs and what we, we need to push for because I was that child.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
I would say that schools are, are not a hypothesis for me. I've lived in there for the last 26 years, so it's a lived experience. I'm ready to go above and beyond for the school board. I became a math teacher because the school in which I was teaching did not offer algebra to students who needed it for citywide high schools. So I started teaching them after-school algebra. The next year, the principal asked me to be a math teacher, so that's how I became a math teacher. I sacrificed a year of income salary last year. My wife was not happy, let me tell you. So I could finish up my degree in social work so I can come back and be a resource for our students. I'm ready to go above and beyond on the school board as well.
Thank you. Ms. Riley?
I'm the first person in my family to attend college. I've served on numerous PTA boards and honored to receive the Maryland PTA Lifetime Achievement Award for my advocacy, which has always been about equity for our students. I'm running for board now because after years of practicing law and teaching law, I'm at I'm at a point in my life where I can commit full-time to this position and to bringing, lifting the potential of all our students. As a sibling, I know the personal tragic consequences of a school failing, a child, it was my brother who didn't receive the special education services he needed, and I lost him when I was in law school. I want to lift the potential of all our students, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Mr. Adib?
30 seconds is not enough. I am a professional student, I guess, and educator, and involved in education the entire time. So, I was a public teacher, a school teacher for three years, an adjunct professor for five years, an education commissioner for four years, bicameral bipartisan oversight committee for five years, and I am general counsel now to a private university in DC. My entire life has been with education. And for me, the scariest thing I ever saw was a 17-year-old serving a life sentence without parole, and I don't ever want to see a child in that situation. So, education matters to me.
Thank you. Mr. Sugg?
My children have 39 years of MCPS ahead of them. I'm the ultimate stakeholder here. And also, my career in education has been at the intersection of community development and education. I served on the University of Missouri Board of Curators. I spent five years teaching at the community college level. A few years back, I went back and earned my doctorate degree in education at the College of William &amp; Mary, where I studied the achievement gap and school finance in Maryland, highly relevant for this right here. And finally, my ideas might seem radical tonight, but they should not be radical.
Thank you. Ms. Silvestre?
I came to this country when I was eight years old. I didn't speak a word of English. We came with the clothes on our back, and we were undocumented for a long time. Thanks to hard work and a lot of help from great teachers and caring adults, I'm here before you today, and that's the promise that I see in all of our children in MCPS, and that's what I hope for all of them. I won't go through all of my community engagement and education experience, but you can check that out on our website. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Arbuckle?
So, I may not have all the answers, and I may not have gotten a lot of the questions correct up here, but I know what it means to serve the public. I work for the federal government currently. I was, I served in the Army for five years. I chose to run for this because I want to serve Montgomery County, and I want to serve our students, and provide them with the best education that we can possibly give them, using the resources that we have.
Thank you. And Mr. Ripian?
Thank you. I do support, like I said, higher pay for classroom teachers, and I think that is the best way to recruit and retain them. I was nominated by Ike Leggett and unanimously confirmed by the county council to be a board member for the Montgomery County Public Libraries. I served, this is my third year, as a public servant in that capacity. There is a famous quotation by Abraham Lincoln. It reads, "Upon the subject of education, I can only say that I view it as the most important subject which we as a people may be engaged in." I believe in that, and that's why I'm running for the Board of Education, because education is the best way up the socioeconomic ladder, and that's something I want for everyone. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, your candidates for at-large and District Three. Okay, take a breath, but don't leave yet. Don't leave yet. Give us like two minutes. I just wanted to say thank you to all of the candidates. Thank you to all of the audience members. I hope that with the depth and the breadth, the passion, and the varied interest and experience that you saw here, you were able to gain something from tonight. We have one final word from one of our partners tonight, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to come and speak with you and talk about these very important issues affecting our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If I don't end in one minute, all of you can stand up while I am speaking and leave. I want to thank my fellow partners in making this fantastic event happen. The diversity of the questions reflects the diversity of the team. I really want to thank all of you on behalf of the partnership for coming here tonight, all the candidates, but most importantly, I want to thank all of you, and we're going to give you two homework assignments to take with you. One is to inform your fellow friends about how important this Board of Education race is. The future of our children depends on who we elect in June and then in November. So, that counts double. That's my homework for all of you. Thank you so much for coming, and we really hope that you take some time to really look into the candidates' websites to see what they stand for. Thank you, and good night. Buenas noches.